All right, I call the Wednesday, November 12th OSAGE County Commission Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. All right, we have a roll call Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Peter, County Clerk Michelle Morris. For additions and deletions to the agenda, I've got a few. We need to add Tricia Webb for CUP. Be under New Business.
Treasure payroll change.
And then Treasure...
And then BT and Co.
And then we have, we're adding BT and Co., we have a nine o'clock team meeting, which will start shortly. I needed to add a PayCorps update. I was getting some emails about the data extraction, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna add that and if you can give us an idea of how that's going for the data extraction that they're needing, we can also put that under New Business. And then Josh had sent us an email regarding a Department Head Meeting email he's gonna send out, but he wanted us to review it and approve that. So I just had it listed as Department Head Meeting and... Let's see, Department Head Meeting, November 18th, but the email that Josh wants us to approve, I don't even know how to say that. So that would be the fourth one. And then I need to add an Executive Session. I'm waiting to hear back from Josh, he's not available today, but he was going to see if he had an attorney that might be available, one of his associates. So I'm, I'm gonna put it as Executive Session, but if we don't have the attorney, then I just have to do it in open. And it's just gonna be, it would be legal advice, and it was just gonna be in regards to media response. So we need to add that. And then I wanted to have a discussion on the Canvas for tomorrow, I'm not sure who else is available and if we possibly need to move it to next week. Josh said we could move it to Tuesday if we needed to, so I need to add that.
To my knowledge, it's gotta be certain timeframe and publication notice and everything.
Well, we'll, we'll just, we'll go ahead and have a discussion on it at least. Brandon, did you have anything?
No, I don't think so. Do you have, is part of your IT discussion gonna be contract discussion?
Yes, so Sonny had, yes, it's on there because Josh had asked for a follow-up from Sonny, so I have that. And he just wanted us to verify that and a couple other items.
I think that's all I had.
Okay, so I would just need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye, or no, you, so moved. I second.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
You weren't joking about that morning, were you?
Oh gosh, it's, it's a lot. All right. I am going to have to come back to public comments, public hearing or correspondence because we have a nine o'clock Teams meeting with BT and Co. So we're gonna start with that. And then, if I can get this going, then you're gonna...
Sure, I'll snuggle. See if your technology luck is better than mine. I'm real good with a hammer, though. Not very good with a keyboard, but real good with a hammer. Yeah. You can take pictures, that's about it.
All right, join.
You're an expert.
I am not. I am not, I gotta find the volume. That's there, mic. Camera. Light that's up.
In here.
There we go, yes.
Perfect. Hello, do you have all three commissioners there?
We have two. But the email, I believe, went to all three of us, so I don't know if Les might be joining at some point.
Okay. I think, let me just verify that I did go to that.
And then can you add our county clerk, if you hadn't already sent that out?
Sure, I can do that now.
And it would be M. Morris@OsageCo.org.
Oh, Michelle. Yep, and Les was on the invite, so.
Okay. Were you able to get that? Okay.
It's nice to put a face with a name with you, Heather, so, nice to meet you, I'm Matt.
Yes.
Director at the firm, and Kayla and Miranda have really been taking the lead on the project, and so they'll probably get to do most of the talking today, but...
Sure.
And we're excited to get going, and we'll kinda fill you in on where we're at on things with requests and things like that today, so.
Okay. There we go, okay.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
Can you hear us, Michelle?
Yes.
You're muted. Yes, I can hear you. Perfect.
That's gonna do an echo. Yeah. She's sitting, yeah.
Do we have to wait for that, or should we get started?
Hold on just a second, she's gonna mute her side because she's sitting next to us, so then it's echoing.
Oh, perfect, okay. So you can probably talk from there and I'll be able to hear you. Okay, fabulous, do we wanna wait for Les?
We haven't heard anything from him, so we'll probably, just go ahead and get started.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Well, we did meet with Michelle, I thought yesterday, I guess we were running together Monday, we just kinda had a little work session to give us some access to things. So we were able to get access to ADP, we're not so worried about getting PayCorps access yet, but eventually we will. And then also CIC, she was able to create us a login, but we're gonna need to get some network access, so we've reached out to Sam with your IT group and connected them with our IT group, so hopefully they'll be able to work quickly, like IT things do, and get that resolved quickly. So we'll see when that happens, but we're trying to get something started now early, just with our access to ADP, we were able, and I'll maybe let Miranda talk more here. We were able to see what was needed, or what's missing anyways, what we need to know, though, is what's the end result? What do we need to upload into CIC? So we're gonna need to talk to somebody on the CIC side, I think, but Miranda, go ahead and if I missed something there.
Yeah, no, that's pretty much it, spent some time yesterday looking at what already exists in your ADP, as well as kind of evaluating what we kinda might need to do. But as Kayla said, we, we need to connect and figure out what the end result is supposed to be with CIC, so we can back into what are some of the setup decisions and recommendations that would need to be made. I sent a message to Michelle late yesterday, she may not have even had the chance to read it, you know, kinda asking, hey, who, who could help us? Whether there's someone at the county that knows more about the integration process with CIC, or someone at CIC themselves. So as soon as we can get that, we can keep moving with that, and, and kind of getting to a place where we can recommend a path board.
Okay, so you don't have the contact, you don't have the contact information for CIC?
Not yet, yep, that's... And I was gonna also ask, there was somebody, another IT person, and I have the name written down at home, I didn't bring my notes, but...
Andrew Shirk?
Yes, Shirk, that was doing some out, some IT stuff for you guys, maybe, we just don't wanna duplicate any efforts. Do you know what exactly he's working on?
What, what, what name?
Andrew Shirk, I think it was.
Is he with Sentry?
Michelle, was it you that was telling us about that?
Yes, so PayCorps, that's one that they had recommended to help us go through on a new way, ADP has that, so that, you know, what ledgers, what was paid where, what adjustments they've made, things like that.
I'm gonna mute me, and then you can talk, I gotta find, I'm gonna mute me so that she can't, where's my mute button?
Laptop right corner. Where it says mic, if you click on that, it should mute it.
There, I just muted you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so, thanks.
Turn your volume off now. He was provided by PayCorps so that he could go through and hide what was in ADP to help bring out things for the journal entries that would need to be put into CIC.
So he is with PayCorps, okay, so he's probably doing what he's trying to do with ADP.
Contracted with PayCorps, yeah. I did, I did reach out, because I hadn't heard from him, and they were supposed to follow up with him to see where he was on things. And as far as the template that needs to go in for the import, once there's ledger lines through ADP, then CIC will provide that where we can get that pulled over and imported.
Okay, does he have that imported, is that might be what we need, like that template?
That comes from...
CIC.
CIC will convert whatever they need to do once ADP has it set up.
So, as I was looking at ADP, I think, it seems like there's a few different ways we could go about the setup, but understanding how it's going to feed into CIC might form the best way to do that. So it would be, it would be really helpful to make decisions, I think, if we can talk to someone about that process. So it's probably not Andrew, but somebody else, yeah.
Okay. Yes, we could do that, I have a... CIC team manager, I think is what they call her, I can send you that contact and we can get that stuff together.
Perfect, great. You might just warn them.
Absolutely, I may just write you down real quick and include you guys on here.
Yep, perfect, that'll work great. Okay, yeah, we think our payroll's kind of number one priority. It's probably important to kinda prioritize, you know, what it means to the person.
You ready, okay, sorry, we're switching back over, hold on.
Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, perfect, no, you're good. Yeah, so we're, we're kind of are trying to prioritize payroll, and in order to really even run the reports to make sure everything's correct in payroll, we have to do this setup with ADP first, so this is really step one. And then we know there's some fires with certain departments that had maybe some issues with how their payroll was ran, and that'll be our next highest priority. So people have to get paid, definitely had priority one, but we just wanna make sure that was your guys' hottest fire as well, make sure we're prioritizing the right thing and just kinda see if there's something else, another direction you want us to head at this point.
I, I think that, yes, ADP finishing out the year and that everything is correct for the employees, all their withholdings, the amounts they've been paid, their capers, that all of that's correct, finishing out the year. In tandem, though, we do have to get the PayCorps ready, I've been going for January 1, and we're running really tight. So I know they were still waiting on an extraction, and that was one of the items I was gonna visit with Michelle today to see if she was able to get that extraction data to them.
They have everything they asked for thus far.
Okay, 'cause I think I got an email yesterday asking from...
I did, like, ten minutes after the email.
Okay, so she says she sent the extraction to PayCorps.
Okay.
I think I sent it to them as well.
So you've got somebody probably within PayCorps that is assigned to help with that conversion process, and I'm sure you're paying for that, so...
Yeah, so we had a, there was a kickoff meeting maybe mid-October.
Okay.
And so we kinda had that first kickoff, and then there were some things that were needed, and so that extraction was one of those. So Michelle said she took care of that yesterday, but she said she might have also sent that information to you?
Payroll history.
Payroll history.
I'll look into that, I don't know that I've seen it yet, but yeah, Michelle and I were exchanging some emails yesterday, so we'll look at that.
Perfect. Yeah, so if there's anything you need our assistance with on that PayCorps side, let us know, but otherwise, we won't get into that just yet. We'll let them take care of the conversion steps there. So that's...
And I think what I'm hearing is that kind of our work with rounding out ADP will feed into how PayCorps is trying to map CIC, so we're kinda, you know, with the front end of that process, so.
Yes, because...
I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we try to start off on as good a foot as possible with them, you know? Put in good information so we can get good information back.
Because whatever went wrong with ADP, we'd like to identify that and avoid that to where we're getting what he just said. Correct, fresh start from the beginning.
Yep, yep. We used ADP ourselves at the firm, and Matt has a little bit more experience with this, but we had some of the similar issues with, with, it, it's kind of an ADP thing, so, there were, I think it was like the leave banks, you know, wouldn't calculate correctly, or things wouldn't roll forward correctly, or pay, pay wasn't right for that leave amount, it was just a lot of troubles, so.
Seems like once you get it in there, you can't adjust it.
So, go ahead.
It just seems like once you get the information in there, you have a hard time adjusting it, you know?
Yep, yep, that's exactly what Matt was saying when we were talking about it yesterday, yep. So definitely will be something for us to dig into a little bit more. In order to even do that, we have to be able to run reports out of ADP, can't even do that until the setup is done. So step one, for sure, is identified now, and then we'll probably have more questions, once they get them to step two, figuring out, you know, who was paid wrong, who, who needs us to look into some of that stuff, where, you know, where do you got complaints first? And then we'll kinda go down to the ones with, out of the rest, essentially, so.
And then also confirming, I called ADP maybe a month or so ago, and that information they told me was that all the withholdings, excluding capers, all the withholdings were correct and had been submitted and had been the contribution sent in. We need to find out if that's accurate, because Michelle's saying that on her end, that's not correct, but that, they said it was, so we just need to verify, is it or isn't it, and because if it's not, that needs to all be corrected. And then with the capers, they said the withholdings have been done out of the checks, but that the retirement services were not part of our package, so they had not done filings or contributions, so we just, that also has to just, it sounds like that the, the withholdings are correct, but it just all needs to be sent in and submitted, and that, we would love to have that done by the end of the year, also.
All right, so you know for sure capers needs to be paid, and I think we had that noted, and then we'll just verify. It's hard to even tell if those have been paid until that information's in your system, bank records are done, and then we'll be able to say, yay, it's all cross-referencing. But without that happening on a regular basis, this will take a little, we'll take a dive into that first, though, before we can really even get the rest of that, so, yep.
Okay.
That works. Okay, well, I think we know where we're starting for sure. How often do you want us to meet with you guys, just for kind of an update, priority chat?
I, my guess is initially, if we just start once a week, if, and then as time goes on, that may filter off to less. We just don't know.
Yep, that's perfect, and we'll probably be in touch with Michelle a little bit more frequently than that even. So that'll kinda be our first point of contact, but then we'll update you guys weekly and just make sure we're working on the right things. But for this coming week, that is definitely gonna be our focus, so.
Okay.
Fingers crossed we can get some things answered soon, too.
So we have two fronts, we're working on the payroll side, and then we have the AP side. Is there a different person that is the point person for the AP side? Or is it...
It'll start with us, and then we might be able to farm some of that out. What, where should we start with that?
I, I think with Linda and Michelle, looking at where we're at on finishing out 2024, I know Linda gave us an update last week. She gave us a lot of data, I literally can't remember all of it, but I know, I guess for, we need to for sure make sure that everything in 24 is in, that whatever bills have been paid in 24, that they're entered it in, and then, I'm not sure if she's done the reconciliations, I feel like that she hadn't finished 24 reconciliations.
Okay, Kat, were you guys on ADP in 2024 or no?
No.
That was before ADP?
Mar, March of this year was, no, April of this year was supposed to be this, the first. But in regards to like, all the, the bills, what's been approved, what's been paid, does that all match? If there anything that's been paid that... If there anything that's been paid that had, didn't end up, that hadn't been through the commission yet, we're needing to get all that for '24 and all the reconciliations.
Okay, yep.
I was going to say, we, we had set up something with Linda and she ended up being sick, so we'll try and get that back on the calendar to touch base with her. Because I would say we don't, we know we need to work on the AP, but we need to get some more background. And is that all running through CIC? Michelle, do you even know the answer to that? Is all the AP running through CIC or is it some other system?
It's CIC.
Okay, and so, yeah, we definitely need that access established so we can start peeking around and seeing what we can figure out. And then, yeah, we need to get back on Linda's calendar, so we'll do that.
Yep.
And is all the AP paid out of one operating account? And is the payroll paid out of the payroll bank account? Or do they both come out of the same bank account? Do you know that?
Same bank account.
Do you want to answer that?
That's the same bank account, yes.
This is so unprofessional. Could you hear her?
No.
She said same bank account.
Same bank account, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I know for sure for that we'll need your bank statements from however, whenever the last time I was reconciled, you know, through, then it was '24 at least. So if that's something you want to start uploading, Michelle, feel free. I know that could take a little bit unless you already have it electronically. Yeah, but for now, yeah, we'll need that CIC access first, so we'll keep bugging those IT people every day.
And I'll also, I'll forge you a couple numbers that I have that I use when I reach out to CIC.
First to CIC, perfect, okay. Okay?
Yeah, it sounds like on the AP side, I think that CIC access and then meeting with Linda and Michelle would be great first steps there to get the lay of the land there and figure out our first steps, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Heather, kind of the overall big picture process, you know? Miranda, Kayla, myself, we're really trying to get things scoped out, you know, the lay of the land and everything. And then we can bring in additional team members once we have this bulk data that we need to make sure is reconciling and what has been posted and what hasn't, is when we can bring in our other resources to really help with that whole process. So right now it's kind of the information gathering and really understanding where we're at so we can pull team members in and have them go and go fast, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have any?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
Yep, I think we know the direction we're headed right now and we'll talk to you, we'll give you an update again next week. Hopefully we'll have a few things subject on at that point, so.
Is there a time that works best? Do you want to just stick with the nine o'clock? That's when our meetings start. Is there a time that works best for your team?
I think it would be nine on Wednesdays, yeah. That works.
It's supposed to be Tuesdays.
I'm sorry, our meetings are on Tuesdays.
Oh, okay.
It, it just happened to be because of Veterans Day that it's a Wednesday. I'm completely mixed up.
Oh, yes. Okay, yeah, that's also fine.
Sorry, so Tuesdays, yes, and if you guys send that invite out, that sounds great and you can send it to all of the same individuals.
Okay. We'll get those scheduled at least through, no, maybe through December and then, you know, if we need to cut down shorter after that, we'll be able to get it done, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you guys. We look forward to work with you.
Thank you. Have a good week.
You too. All right.
All right. What do we have next? Okay, is anyone here for public comment? I don't see anybody that's not. No public comments. Do we have any correspondence? Okay. I'm going to skip around here a little bit. Tricia Webb, I'm going to let you come forward. You have a CUP.
Additional use permit for the establishment of accessory dwelling unit. So what they would like to do is build a garage with two bedrooms, bathroom and a small living room as well as garage portion for the boat and lawnmower. So this is a vacation home for this family out at Pomona Lake. They have approval from their HOA and the commissioners. Their septic tank is new in 2020 with new water lines. It would sustain the additional use. It's already being used in that extent. It's just the fact that their house is not even eight hundred square foot, one bedroom. And with kids growing, they would like to be able to.
So there's a current house, structure?
Yes.
And they're adding on or this is a separate structure?
So this will be a separate structure. If they were adding on, we wouldn't have to do the conditional use permit, but they just want to put up the accessory building, which is the garage, that have a bathroom, a small living room for the kids and two small bedrooms in there.
Sounds like it's just a house with a garage.
Pretty much, but there's not going to be a kitchen or it's just.
So it's not set up to be a separate living court or something? It's not like, okay?
It's just extra living space for them.
Two bedrooms, a bath and a boat.
But a lawnmower.
And I see you got a septic tank requirement or whatever spelled out there. Does that?
Yes, just because a lot of times people put in a septic tank and they don't think they need to do anything with it and they go back. And so this way they know that they need to have it popped every three to five years.
So they're just going to, they'll just have two structures running into them?
Do you have any concerns or anything on them?
No. No.
What, what area was it at, you said?
South Shore, Shoreline Drive, Royal Heights Estates. And their HOA president, I guess, he came in and talked to me. They had no issues with it, fit into all of their parameters. The only thing was the fact of the siding since it's going to be, they want to do a metal building, but since it's going to be a garage without a kitchen, then the HOA would approve it.
There's no other sanitary sewer around there on the south side, is there? It's all private, yeah?
You can come up with the rules and dollars.
No, I don't want to volunteer. No, that's not what I was just asking.
I, I missed what you said about the last part. They, it's a metal sided building, but because it's not a house, they're allowing it? Whereas if it was a house, they wouldn't allow it?
Yes, their HOA can't do like the marble, it has to have traditional siding.
Oh, that must be why they're making it a garage.
No, that was their original plans anyways, so.
Well, I don't have any problems with that, Heather, do you?
I think so, I'm just finishing.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
I mean, I guess in the future, if they did use it for a separate dwelling space, then they would have, there would be different zoning on that, right?
It would, but they would also have approval through the HOA and ask for that.
Okay.
And I think that's why he came in to talk to me and make sure what she was applying for.
Match what he was being told.
Well, I mean, they have their own regulations and they have to mess together.
Oh, yeah, they're sovereigns.
And those, did you start the zoning board?
They approved it.
Okay. Did they have any concerns or anything with it?
No.
Okay. All right, so I would move to approve resolution number Z dash twenty-five dash zero five, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for establishment of an accessory dwelling unit on certain property within the unincorporated portions of Osage County, Kansas.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
You just need one sign or do you?
No, there's.
Thanks, you guys.
You're welcome. Let's see what I have here. Ryan Fine, Roden Bridge. Good morning.
You were sitting back there very quietly.
Yeah.
Okay. You catch a little bit of the creeping crowd, did you?
Yeah. I was brought this in, I would like to hire Roger Laneback. He had moved out of the area for a while, that's why he left, but he is back to where he was. He did a lot of work with my signing crew.
Oh, okay. What years was he here? What years was he here?
Uh, he lived out.
Oh, it's Roger Lane.
Yeah.
You said Roger Laneback?
Yeah.
And I thought- Like, I don't recognize it.
Laneback, huh? Your morning's going to stretch all day, isn't it? Hang in there, you'll be all right.
Yeah. Okay, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. So I would move to approve the status payroll change report, hiring Roger Lane in Roden Bridge. Sixteen dollars per hour, effective eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Michelle, how much does that matter on when start dates and all that? Does it just?
It's, the new hires aren't that big a deal.
Okay, gotcha.
The status changes for-
Existing, I got you, okay.
Yeah, and I always thought it'd be kind of, you know, one of their backdating and stuff, so I would try to make mine.
Yeah.
Yes, the backdating thing, no. No.
I tried to avoid that.
Yes, please.
Hey, I appreciate the invite, by the way, going out there to see the concrete crew, put the decking on last week. That was nice. That was pretty cool.
Yeah, we should have, we should have about fifteen more days of pure time.
Give or take.
Give or take.
I thought you were sending me photos of the sunrise or something and I was like, oh, look how pretty the sky is. And then I look, I'm like, oh, it's a bridge. Like, oh, that's a nice looking bridge.
So they're going to do the railing pour next on that, right? The columns and the, on the rail?
Yeah, we should be able to start for handrails this week.
Cool.
As much as ever on pure time where they can start.
Long as the weather continues to cooperate, it's been pretty good.
Yeah, then we will have a new bridge letting December third, as of right now. So that is our next bridge letting and that is over off of Yers in two thirteen.
Yers in two thirteen. How many bridges have, we were talking about this since you've been here. How many have you kind of been a part of?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight?
Sounds good.
I do not know. I've been here a little longer than him and I have no idea. I can't keep track of bridges.
Keep busy.
Yeah.
Okay. Rebecca Holberg, Treasurer. General change. Well, how are things going?
Good.
Are you getting situated?
Yeah.
No?
I have a new hire.
Okay.
This is starting today.
This a new position or someone that had left or?
New hire.
New hire. I didn't know if it was an empty position or?
Oh, yeah, there's tons.
There's tons.
How do, how do you pronounce her name?
Haley Capone.
Capone, okay. I, I hope to say it correctly.
Clerk position up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So how many open positions do you have?
Or do you even know what you need yet?
I'd say I still have at least four.
It used to be one, two, three, four, like six or seven and then?
There needs to be at least three on the tax side and at least five on the local side.
All right, I, I would move to approve Haley Capone, Motor Vehicle Clerk in the Treasurer's Office at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour with effective date being today, which is November twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I haven't seen any smoke coming out of the windows up there, so everything must be. Oh.
What time should we be leaving? Is there anything you're needing from us?
No.
I haven't really checked in too much yet. I figured you're probably getting, getting situated.
Trying, it's a whole round, so.
Reach out if you need something.
Hold on, I'm sure that I'm rearranging all the piles.
Oh, I haven't seen it. I'll have to stop by, I haven't seen it.
It'll get better. Looks nice up there.
All right, Franny Dieter's, Senior Senator. We have letter of support and Christmas, Christmas party.
A letter of support, you know, last time I signed for the match letter, now I need a letter of support that I have applied for, and here we have it.
Oh, interesting.
I don't know.
Okay, is this still for the fifty-three eleven grants? Okay.
Still the fifty-three eleven.
Okay, so it says, "To whom it may concern, we, the Board of Osage County Commissioners, are writing a letter of approval recertifying the Title VI document." I don't know what that is. Recertifying the Title VI document for Osage County General Public Transportation.
Yeah, okay, I still have another one you-
This says for the twenty twenty-seven.
That's the grant I'm applying for.
Is this the right letter?
Yes, that's, I, that's not the letter of support, but my printer's not working, I have to call them. I still need that one, but I forgot the other one, so I'll have to see back next week.
So what is this one for?
That one is for the Title VI, it's a discrimination policy.
Did you email that to me by chance?
I haven't emailed those to you, but I will, I can't scan anything.
Well, I was going to say if you emailed it, I would do it before you go put the printer off, but, yeah.
I'm telling you that my printer didn't answer.
When, oh, yeah. When you submit the agenda items, at the very bottom it says, are there documents that need to be sent? And you can put yes on there and then just emailing those documents.
I don't know, I just, it's been a long week, sorry.
Okay.
Apparently it's contagious, you and Heather having one of those mornings.
I'm, I'm having horrible morning.
It's just a long morning?
This copier, I'm not, call the guy, he's going to can't do that, I suppose. It's stupid, it's just spit the papers out like crazy, what was it?
Not good. It's no fun when your printer or computer doesn't work. Okay, I'm going to finish reading this part.
Copy paper running over.
So it says, "We, the Board of Osage County Commissioners, are writing a letter of approval recertifying the Title VI document for Osage County General Public Transportation for the twenty twenty-seven year fifty-three eleven grant." So I would move that we approve the letter of support for the twenty twenty-seven fifty-three eleven grant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Do you want me to sign this or?
Yeah, just if they took the last one you signed.
Because she can stamp it if you want it stamped.
I don't care.
You got printer handwriting.
Well, it says, Leslie Holman, I'm not going to forge his name, so.
And I guess I'll have to bring back the actual letter of support that says that, you know, I'm applying for the grant.
So we get to see you again.
Again.
See, it ain't all bad.
Sorry about your luck.
Wonderful news.
Okay, on to a happier topic, Christmas party.
I just need to know kind of an amount I'm working with. I talked to Michelle, you said what, four, five, four, five, about a hundred?
No, no.
I saw that there's rows.
I've been up a long time these days and it doesn't make doing good. I'm on a chair about a million dollars.
Oh, my.
Four thousand four hundred dollars.
Four to five hundred dollars last year?
Yes.
Okay. So you're asking?
What, what do you think I can, is that okay number?
Probably.
Comes in general fund, right?
Yeah, we have to-
I just need to know for catering, food and gifts and whatever.
Yeah, if you want us to approve that amount, how, I would say as you work on it, if you find something that's like completely skyrocketed and it's not in that and you need to come back, but are you okay with approving that amount to?
Yeah, yeah, you.
Yeah, do we need to approve that? Do we need to be?
No, we, we can say not to.
Because you know, if it's under two thousand- Cause you know, if it's under two thousand dollars, we don't have to, we don't have to...
I thought we were gonna sign a letter of support for the Christmas party.
You're coming to a Christmas party.
That is what it says, letter of support, or it says Christmas party, letter of support. I never even thought about that.
I was excited.
You're dealing with me.
It's a comment.
Just say whatever, okay, just say whatever, Franny's crazy, it's okay.
I'm not gonna say that. Yes, I am fine with that amount.
I'm crazy today.
I'll sign a letter of support for your Christmas party.
Will you?
Yeah.
Okay. Except now I found out, actually when I put it out there, I got a lot of people offering help, but, but Sheriff's Departments have them saying they were supposed to be...
The same day? That always happens.
For their department?
Yeah.
How'd that happen?
I don't know.
Can we switch it?
Can we merge it?
We start days to...
I don't have an open, I'm gonna be rid of the center for the other days. Unless we have them on a Sunday. I don't care. It's only days I have open. It'll be okay, we'll figure it out. I got lots of help, I've offered to help, so that's a good thing. And suggestions, I put it out, I was open to suggestions and help and whenever anybody went down. I was gonna come across and see what he thought of his folks would do. And see if we could change it or they could change it. I need to ask them to change it.
Doubt that they can.
They can't change it.
I doubt it.
It'd just be nice if we could...
What about moving to January, let everybody get through the hospital vessel through December?
No. But, we did that last year, we lost so many people, because the weather was so bad. Remember, man?
We had to change it like four times.
I know, we did. So I really would like to have it before Christmas, only because I have an issue with the Christmas party after Christmas. So if you just, once I have a problem. I know, I have a problem with having Christmas before Thanksgiving, but that's just me.
Well, we know it's in good hands and you're gonna take care of it. You're gonna make it all work out.
Wait till you see what I got for you to do, Santa's.
Whoa.
Okay. Thank you guys, appreciate everything you do for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have a department meeting?
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah. Yeah, next week.
You wanna make a copy of that now, or you wanna transmit to Senator Coffee? And you should make him...
Maybe you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, fine. We'll get the other set on Tuesday. Thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Have a wonderful day.
Okay, I'm gonna move to the unfinished business. A follow-up from last week with the IT discussion and as we're moving away from Sentry. We had approved last week that Sunny would be working for us during that transition. Him and Sam would be working on that. Sunny would be the administrator during that time. And for a little bit after that, Josh asked me to get some sort of a proposal from Sunny, just to have that part in writing, so I brought that. And then, I can't remember if we did or not, but Josh said if we hadn't approved to go ahead and authorize Josh to send the letter to Sentry. And then I think we need to look at what an end date would be for that. But anyway, this is what Sunny had sent, I'd already forwarded it to Josh. And, that was just kind of finishing up from last week.
And this is still keeping, I mean, this is with the idea of Sam still being around to handle a lot of the...
Yeah, cause right now Sentry is the admin, and then you have Sam and Sunny who work as the departments reach out to them.
Right.
So as we move from Sentry, you know, Sunny was here and he helped as we moved to Sentry, do that transition over to Sentry. So he's gonna be the administrator as we're leaving Sentry. Sam's still here, they'll work together. And then Sunny's just gonna stay on as administrator, kind of on a limited basis until we finish out who the long-term administrator is gonna be. We do need two people, and I know Josh had, one of Josh's recommendations was that when we get the Finance Director, that that Finance Director could be the second credential person as the administrative status, so for maybe two to three months after we transition away, Sunny's available just to stay on as that administrative person until we get something long-term. But yes, Sunny and Sam both. Sam will still be here as he's being used right now for the departments that reach out to him.
How long a contract period would this be with...
I don't know if there's a date on it, but it's until we come up with the two-person long-term plan. So, I know when Josh had, and I visited Josh about it, you know, as we move into the new year, we're hoping to move to that Financial Director within two to three months in the new year, so it'd be short-term.
Yeah, so I mean, would it be something, you could put an end date, like a six-month contract or something on that, or I mean...
You could. I don't, I mean, I'm hoping it doesn't take that long.
No, but I just said that there's...
Yeah, I mean, if you want an end date to where we re... Yeah. It just kind, it just, it patches us through till we determine long-term what we're doing.
I believe Sentry will just go to the last day of the year.
Yeah, that could be. I, I don't know what the contract says, so...
Really?
Yeah. So if we, if we end with Sentry at the end of the year, that's what Josh would be sending out as the end date. And then as we move into the next year, Sunny would just stay on as the admin.
Kind of a legacy, yeah.
He just stand as admin. Sam is doing a lot of the day-to-day stuff, and then that just gives us the opportunity as we're working towards, if we get that Finance Director, if they become that administrative status, or if we have a different person.
Whatever, yeah.
We need to have two people.
Sure.
So Sunny's gonna be that secondary person up until we move into that next phase, so... That's why I think there's not a, you know, date date on there, but hopefully it doesn't take us that long.
No, well, so if you did, yeah. I don't know, I just like the idea of not committing to a year, you know, if you did like a six-month.
Oh, yeah, I do not, no, not a year, I don't think it's, no.
Right.
No. If you wanna put an end date on it, you can. So if you want, I mean, I could, uh...
I mean, we can all, you know, we can extend it if we need to, once we get there, but...
December, January, February, March, April, May. So, the proposal, we had approved the proposal up through the end of May.
Yeah.
Okay. And, okay, so I'm gonna make two motions.
Okay.
One for this and then one for...
The letter?
The letter from Josh.
Right, and he's, I talked with him a little bit, but just to make sure we're thinking the same thing. He's okay with, as long as we have somebody in place on paper, or we have a plan in place, he's okay with writing the letter of intent to...
Well, and that's what also Sunny said, is that we have to have a plan in place. So our plan right now is...
Right.
Sunny comes on as admin, helps us transition away, he'll stay on temporarily, we'll have those two people, and then that gives us time to work towards that next step of what the long-term IT looks like.
Whenever, we'll have that six-month, five-month, whatever buffer zone...
Yes.
To figure out what it's gonna look like by the end of twenty-six. Yeah, twenty-six.
Yeah. So that's why Josh, when I followed up with Josh, he says you need some, a proposal from Sunny for the, for this particular service. Yeah, okay, so I would move to approve the proposal from Sunny Sager to be the administrator as we transition away from Sentry Business Technologies. This would be in effect up until May of twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. So with moving away from Sentry, if the contract ends at twenty-five, I'm guessing that that is the terms we would need to abide by.
Is that what you said, Michelle, you think theirs ends up?
I think it's the last day of twenty-five, now I'll have to foil contracts.
Yeah, we need to look.
So...
Definitely we intend not to continue with that, right?
Cause if, yeah, cause once this is approved, that gives them six weeks.
To give us the keys.
It gives, it gives him six weeks to, to work with them and assess everything, see where we're at, and then what we need to do to transition.
So Sunny's gonna get the keys to be able to get into stuff, so to speak.
Yes, yes. So then I would move to approve our legal counsel, Josh and I, sending a letter to Sentry for a non-renewal of contract.
Yeah. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
That makes sense, Michelle. I saw you looked kind of concerned there for a second.
Do you need me to repeat that?
Would you call it a letter of what?
Well, what I said was for a non-renewal of contract. I'm not sure if that's the best term, but if we were renewing, we would have to approve a renewal.
Right. Yeah, I don't know, legally he might call it something like a notice of intent not to, or something, but yeah, it's the same gist.
Yeah.
I don't have initials after my name.
When? Is the, in terms, so to speak, effective?
Well, I think, we approved it last week, but the letter was, I mean, his proposal was approved today. So, I don't know. I, I guess we approved it in increments. Is that what you mean? Sunny's proposal?
Yeah, you said effective something until...
Oh, well, it would be, I mean, this proposal is approved today and running through the end of May of twenty twenty-six.
So effective now through May?
Yes.
And I don't know, it might be something where we end up having to get updates from him, or Sam, or somebody. Periodically just to say, hey, are they actually cooperating, or do we need a sterner letter, or you know?
Yes, yes, so he said it would take a handful of days to get in here and assess everything, and then determine what it looks like moving forward. Yes.
Admittedly, it's not my strong suit, is IT stuff.
It's one of those things where you fully rely on someone for...
Yeah.
Everything. Okay. So that was under unfinished business. Economic Development Director is five minutes enough minute, enough because...
I was wondering, can we do it on the back?
Yes, I don't wanna cut you short. Cause we have a ten o'clock. Right, we have two, we have a ten o'clock and a ten thirty. Okay. Sure, so I will, okay, we did that one. The Pay Corps update on the data extraction, and you had said yesterday you, you were able to send them what they needed.
Everything that they have asked for, they have.
Okay. So that was...
How many different people are you working with on that, Michelle, or is it just one or two contact people, or?
Try by twenty, it's gotta be about five. Cause one does time, one does payroll, one does letters, one does HR stuff, one does, you know...
Organized chaos.
Sure, but they've agreed so far, so...
Really, good.
I had a little bit of trouble finding things in ADP because they don't have things set up, so they can't pull reports.
Yeah.
So, you gotta manipulate around that a little bit, but...
Okay. Last thing before we do the executive session, can you, on the update of the approval of minutes, do you know where we're at on, I think from about October of last year till now, I think the minutes...
I don't have that list. Sam is coming in tomorrow, and I think there's a lot or something that's on my folder to share that folder with you guys, so it's not like a bunch of people else trying to work through this.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we need to know how many, I know it's been very hit and miss, so we, I think we have several weeks of approved minutes, but I think of majority of the last few months, we don't.
So, yeah, it's, it's looking good, I just need to get that paper shared.
Okay, then can we, I'll just, if we can get an update next week, I'd like to know what dates aren't approved, and then we can work through that. And I think Josh also...
Just to keep it from falling off the radar.
I, he had an idea of, of what we could also do, if there are, if there are some weeks that just don't have meeting minutes, there's some AI program you can run the meetings through or something.
One thing that is really helpful is we do have the ability to transcribe through our YouTube, but if you don't speak into the mics, it doesn't pick it up. So, usually Heather, I'm here.
I'm right here.
So, if you hold it like closer, it will transcribe what you say, so I know exactly if seconded or voted yes, voted no, whatever.
Okay, well, if we can, um...
Work on our enunciation, right?
Okay. All right, we're gonna move to, we have two executive sessions. One is twenty minutes, one's thirty.
This will be thirty.
Thirty first, thirty, thirty first.
My reminders are popping up as ten and eleven, but I believe it was ten and ten thirty. Okay, so the one that's at ten o'clock is thirty minutes, and the only thing I have is financial affairs. But I have to have what the exception is, and then a topic.
Proprietary information and financial affairs.
Okay.
And we have two guests.
I gotta make sure I read this one. Sorry, I'm gonna open, I gotta make sure I read that one. Okay, so I've got the options of confidential data, trade secrets exception. Is that what you would call it? And then the topic is financial affairs? Okay, so go ahead and finish what you were saying.
Just, Michelle, for the record-keeping, and we'll have two guests joining us this morning, Brandon Sack and Dave Norton with Evergy. We will not, for the record, be discussing solar or wind. And I'd have to invite you to the Economic Development Office for the discussion.
Okay, so I would move that we recess into executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, which is pursuant to confidential data exception with the topic of financial affairs for the amount, in the amount of thirty minutes, returning at ten thirty in the Economic Development Office to include Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter...
Brandon Sack.
Brandon Sack.
And Dave Norton.
Dave Norton with Evergy and Colleen Mendoza.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Colleen, is that, next one's up in your office too?
Yes, yes. And I have sent a note to Chris.
Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I would move to approve extending the executive session under the same terms for a matter of 10 minutes with the same individuals returning at 10:43.
Okay, no action taken in executive session. And Colleen, do you want to introduce? Is there anything you need to introduce for this one?
Yeah, good morning, commissioners. I'd like to request an executive session with our guest Sheriff Chris Wells on confidentiality, under confidentiality and financial affairs.
Okay, so I would move that we recess to executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to the confidential data or trade secrets exception with the topic of being financial affairs for a matter of 20 minutes. Returning at 11:09. Hold on. Is that 20 minutes? I'm just going to say 11:05. That might be a little more, but by the time we get to...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so Chris, the exception is non-elected personnel is our topic.
Yes, so the non-elected personnel is the exception and then I just need to know a topic or if there's multiple topics.
Well, if it's regards to, non-elected personnel is going to have to deal with employee stuff. Yeah, so is it like payroll issues or is it like hiring issues?
Personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
So we'll start with that one and then if we've got a different topic, that's a different exception, we have to, I have to do a different. And is 15 minutes enough to start with or you want to do more? Okay, so I, okay, so I would move to approve entering into executive session for non-elected personnel with the topics of payroll and hiring. For a matter of 15 minutes, returning at, what is, what time is it right now? It's 11:08. Okay, so 18 and 5 is 23, 11:23. To include Sheriff Wells, Michelle Morris, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Cooter.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. I think it was 11:23, if I added 15 minutes properly. That's the worst part of trying to figure out when to come back with not on an easy.
Okay.
No.
No action taken in executive session. And... So I think my option is the confidential data trade secrets exception.
Yeah.
Is that what you're wanting?
Yeah.
This doesn't deal with real estate, does it? Is it security measures?
Uh, it'll be proprietary relation.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna read the one off of here, but how much time?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty, okay. What's, so I'm gonna read the exception, which is the confidential data trade secrets exception, but I need a topic.
Uh, it'll be bids, proprietary bids.
Proprietary? I'm gonna say bids. I'm sorry. Okay.
Sorry.
It's fine. I move that we recess to executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to the confidential data trade secrets exception, with the topic being bids for a matter of twenty minutes. Returning back at eleven forty-five. To include Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cruter, Sheriff Wells.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, no action taken in the executive session.
No, I'm gonna work on, I'm gonna look through the fund. I found what I couldn't find five seconds ago. Okay. Alright, moving on. I have a mess on my desk.
Is Josh available for any second session?
No, I'm, he's not available. He was possibly gonna have an attorney. I'm just gonna... We'll just deal with it in open. Alright, let's move on to economic development. Colleen, Colleen Mendoza, tourism. Yes, that'd be great if you will use that.
Good morning, commissioners. I actually wanted to start by just saying a very quick thank you to all of our Osage County veterans for their service and for the freedom that we enjoy. So I just wanted to honor them from yesterday. Today, we're here to follow up on the Osage County transient guest tax. If you recall in July, shall I close that meeting?
Yep, is there, there should be a, a sign on the back of the door.
Yeah, there's an open meetings law.
And put that on the front.
I don't know, I would...
Oh, now might be redundant. Okay, it's okay. Yeah, that's good.
What we've written, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. You just, if it locks, then it's, you're in violation.
It's slightly ajar, so hopefully not. So anyway, we are here, if you recall in July, we started the process. We set up a 2% tax, a reminder that this is a tax on visitors coming into our county who are staying in our lodging. And here, we are here today to actually, excuse me, sorry, let me just back up. That 2% will be implemented on October 1st. And so we will, that will, that process will start. In talking to the Department of Revenue, for what we are voting on today, it would be implemented for April of 2026.
Okay.
And this would really set the rate for Osage County. I had, here is the resolution which Josh drew up for us. And Michelle, we would need a resolution number for this guy.
So the 2% is October 1st through the end of March 31st?
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
And the resolution states 8%, but that was just, Josh put that in there knowing that that might be changed. So before you, I also have kind of an overview of what some of the competing county rates are for your consideration. And once, maybe you folks will look over the resolution and see if you have any questions.
So the 8% is, we just have to determine what percentage we want?
Exactly, exactly. Just to give an idea, Franklin County is at 6%, Wapansie's 4%, Chase is 6%, Lion is 5%, Coffey County is currently 4%, but they're planning to move to 5. And Shawnee is 8%. Other communities of our size, Atchison is 8%, Abilene is 8%, Great Bend is 6%.
In the past, when we talked about it, what did we plan to do? Did we plan to do 6? I can't remember.
We had tentatively talked about 5 to 6%.
And would we determine that by January? Had we determined?
Oh, we, we don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know. I can say that Wapansie, who's just started theirs, it equated for them about 20,000 in their first quarter. So, which, which was good. They, they felt like it exceeded their expectations.
And this includes, like, we have one motel, right?
Yeah.
But, does this include the short-term, like VRBO and all of those?
Yes.
So any stuff out of the lake or wherever?
Yep, it does. And I have sent out letters, I've put it on social media, I've put it in the newspaper. And whatever we decide today, it will have to be published for one week, excuse me, published in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks. And then it would become implemented, basically.
And then they remit that to the state, and then the state remits it to us?
Yeah, and I have been in contact with the Department of Revenue.
And how do they identify which properties?
That's on us. That's why I'm...
So we have to determine which properties fit that?
They, it is our responsibility to communicate to all of these different people. And it's hard to make sure that they're all acquiescing to the process. So it's something I know my colleagues have to kind of, they look at Airbnb, Verbo, to try to stay on top of all of them, because it's a revenue source.
But then how does it... So how does it get set up on the state side? Like, when you, like, as a business owner, I remit sales tax, so I have to log into my account and put in my sales, and then it calculates my tax for me. So how are these individuals, how is that getting set up on the state side?
It's my understanding that it's automated. So they, they have some mechanism for labeling.
For how they're registered with the state?
Yes, yes.
Would, are, would we get a list of those?
It's a good question. I can ask.
That might make it easier for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will ask them.
Okay. So what is your request with the percentage?
I would request that the commissioners consider a rate of 6% because I think that is competitive with our, with our counties. I think it's in line with our other counties. And that would be my recommendation.
And all these, whatever funds are generated, that, there's a specific use that we can, we as a county are able to use, right?
Yes, it's specifically for promotion of tourism activities, which actually directly translates into visitor spending in our local communities.
Right.
And have you been able to get a fund set up with a certain fund number and name? Because when that, money comes from the state, they, they have to know where to put that.
Right, we passed a resolution to do that, and a directive. And I actually have on my list a follow-up to make sure that it's, that was executed.
Yeah, you need to make sure that that's been created, because once that, and I, if I remember right, when money comes from the state, sometimes it's not very well labeled?
Is that right? Yeah.
So you need to find out what it's gonna be called, like, what is, when it comes to us, what is it called?
Michelle, do we, do you recall any of that? No, I'll, I'll follow up. I, I had it already on my list to follow up, so.
Yeah, I would...
And since we have a new territory.
I would visit with Rebecca.
Yeah.
And she might be familiar with it from the county she came from.
Yeah.
If...
A lot of times women know if the deposit amount's gonna be, then they...
I'm gonna find it down.
Oh, they do? Okay. And the one thing I would share, so all of the reporting will go to the clerk's office and the treasurer's office, and I, I put that paperwork in requesting that. So you guys will have visibility to it. I actually cannot, just by statute. So I'll be needing to partner with you guys to have visibility to that. So I'll follow up.
Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
This is kind of our plan from the beginning, was to move to something like this, so, okay.
Michelle, do you have a resolution number for us?
I have it.
It is 2025-27. And I'm just curious, whatever rates the commissioners agree to today, are you able to just modify Josh's document? We could have an assignment real quick? It just came from Josh. I didn't know the rate or what the resolution would be.
Do you have it?
Thank you.
I lasted as long as I could. I turned my heater on.
Oh, you did? I'm the opposite. Can you add one more, 6% is that correct?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, ma'am.
Another subject, I ended up having a really good meeting with all of the group. I found out that the young mayor, he had a city council.
Really?
And they need my girl.
Really?
Yes.
No employees for the city, though, right?
No, no. And their funding, they mostly have funding to do their lending.
Sure.
That's, that's about all the money that they have. But it was really good conversation, which were...
It's blinking.
To try to get water to them.
Sure. Did you, were you able to contact Darren and speak with him?
Are you looking for the paper? Did you find it? It's a...
Yep.
Oh.
Perfect.
Yeah, this is like an end something.
We're gonna be reaching out to you.
Good. Good, good.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Do you want us to sign off?
I don't know anything, but I'm pretty good at knowing other people.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, Ben loved you. He was a good resource, so I don't look that bad. Very much. You might double check and make sure that there's no 8% said, that they're all 6. No, thank you very much, Michelle.
Just to warm off the printer.
Okay. Okay, well, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-27, a resolution adopting a transient guest tax pursuant to Charter Resolution C-2025-15, moving from a rate of 2% to 6%.
Say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. And Michelle said she would like three signed.
And to be just sort of by the office, do I get an signature for you? Oh, okay, perfect. Alright, thank you. And in regards to Chairman Holden's signature, can we use an electronic? He always brings me and permits you to use an electronic signature, except, okay. If I did, you got his authorization?
Don't, don't sign that.
So here are three.
So basically, Michelle, I give this to you because you're gonna seal these, and then I pick it up.
Can I?
Alright, that'll be great.
Oh, you toss that?
Yes, please. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. You can open that door when you head out if you'd like. Do you need any break before we proceed? We got...
Oh, if you're offering, yeah, I'd always take a...
Let's do a five-minute recess, returning at 12:05.
Going on a seal of the bottle.
Okay, I resumed the Osage County Commission meeting. Okay. Okay. The next item, Department Head Meeting for November eighteenth. And then a email that Josh is gonna send out to kind of give a little synopsis in advance. In regards to BT and Co. Did you, he just wants us to confirm that the information he was gonna send. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, it looked all right.
Okay. Just says, please discuss on Wednesday whether I can send the following email to Department Heads. And I'm fine with what he submitted. I don't think we have to approve that, do we?
Just consent, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just let him know that I'm fine with that. So let me put that on my to-do list. Okay, do we wanna set a particular time for the department head meeting? We probably should, so that way people will be coming and they may be here.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
And we got the BT and Co. at nine and the Crosswoods. And that's it so far. So.
Okay, we can probably do a ten.
Crosswood's just giving an update on what they're, what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, we'll just do ten a.m. And then, so when I respond back to Josh, I'll just let him know that that's the time we could include that. Okay.
Did he know if he was gonna be available next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is he sending what he wants on the Department Heads to do?
No, all this is, is just a little bit of a synopsis of, that we've hired BT and Co. And a broad view of what they're doing. And then that there may be people that reach out to them if they're needing some information from their department. But it's just kind of an introductory to, this is who we've hired, a general overview. And then next week, we can have a little more discussion um, in regards to that, so. But no, nothing to that detail.
No action required.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Just getting.
And you're that again?
Yes. Okay, for the canvass, I cannot be here tomorrow. Josh cannot be here tomorrow.
So tomorrow is vote canvassing, is that right?
Yes, I did ask, I, I had asked Josh if he was able to come. He said he couldn't. He said we could move it to Tuesday. He said he thought the deadline was next Thursday. Cause he said some other county he's with is doing it next week also.
What time or what, I mean, what?
I have no problem doing that, but I think that that's gonna mess with my publication day.
So it's set for tomorrow, what time?
Nine.
How long does it generally take? I've never done it before.
How much questions are asked?
Most of the day? Most of the business day?
No, but you really do need legal counsel here as you walk, as you walk through it. I mean, there's, cause what I learned the very first go-around, three years ago, is this step is the final step. But we, we're certifying the clerk's work.
Sure.
So it's, it's the commission's meeting. We have a certain thing that we have to do. There's certain steps you wanna go through. We usually always have a legal counsel. Like the last election last year, Josh couldn't come and there was a different, he sent someone else down. But I did ask him and he said he can't be here tomorrow.
We should have things separated out, a list named, our recommendations, statutes to back up why we chose what we did.
Right.
And then you guys do the thing.
There's different piles of.
Sure.
Things that get excluded, so you look through those and if they, you know, she'll stack them together. So here's what should be excluded and why. And you look through all those and then if you have questions.
Stacked, stacked to for each pile, yeah.
And every once in a while, you'll be like, you might pull one and then maybe it's something that does need to be taken out. But they put them in these piles and then you go through and you just verify all that stuff, but anyway.
Yeah, that'd be neat. Uh, I don't know, to be involved with that, yeah, that'd be great.
In the past, we've always done them in the meetings. It just works easier than everyone's here. Plus, it is our meeting. Like, it's, this is a commission duty to certify the election. And I don't even, I don't know if less is available or not, but you got it too. And I know I'm not here. And like I said, Josh isn't available.
Yeah, what would it do? So your publication date, what would that look like for next week?
I would, we'll go into next year's paper, sort of be that request.
Before it was published last. Which is another thing, we need to get off, it'd be great if we could use an email somehow, email publication as the official county paper of record, so to speak. Well, I don't know, I.
So if that's fine with him, then it means they, that's fine with me. I just.
What else is going on tomorrow? Wasn't there something else?
There's, uh, something with Kramer and Lemon.
Wasn't there a association accounting's deal? Or is that not heard?
That's right.
What is today? Wednesday? Okay. You going to that? Oswa, Pa- Potawatomi, Oswatomie.
Omeg.
Omeg.
Sorry, I'm texting. I don't know that he'll be able to respond.
What's the thing? Wasn't there something Potawatomi? Yes, there's something in, like a county. Maybe it's a regional deal, not association county, it's a regional deal.
I'll just table that and see if he responds. So circle that. Okay, last item until we get down to bills and meeting minutes. I had received a couple emails from news organization in Topeka. I did not respond to those. I forwarded them to Josh. I don't know if you received them or not.
Say what, ma'am?
I had received some emails over the last couple weeks.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
From a media organization in Topeka. I had not responded to those. I did forward them to Josh.
Yeah.
I'm guessing you received them.
Yeah.
And I received another one recently. So, um, Josh had proposed a response, but, um, we have to determine today if that's what we would like him to, what he proposed to respond.
Yeah, I.
I had it in here. I was, I was fine with what his response was, but we have to make that determination in the meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't know where, I printed it off. I thought, I can't find it. So it, have you read his?
Yes, ma'am, I did. And I, and I liked what.
Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will. I will let him know that we are fine. I don't know if we, I don't know if that needs official.
I don't think so.
Okay. So I will let him know then, the response that he sent us, we are fine with him, uh, returning that, that back to the media organization. All right, so we're down to bills and meeting minutes. And I'm afraid I have lost what you were saying.
Meeting minutes I left in that folder.
Yeah.
And I will reach out to you guys tomorrow by end of May to make sure you can get in the folder and have access.
For the minutes, got it.
Okay. I don't know how I lost this. You gave me a packet that had the bills and stuff. I don't know.
You should have two payrolls and two bills.
Yes.
Couple of papers we.
Okay, I just, I, I got them. I gotta read something else. We discussed this, I don't know why I can't remember this. I'm going back to the IT thing. But Josh had just asked that as we, as we decided to move forward with Sunny, make sure to authorize the county councilor to send termination notice to Sentry. And so did we vote on that?
Yes, we made two separate motions earlier today.
I'm sorry, I just cannot. I had this whole stack of things. All right, so we've got bills.
I think that's accurate. Is that correct, Michelle? That's what happened, right?
That's what happened.
Okay.
Okay, it's in the meeting. Okay, so you said we don't have meeting minutes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we have bills. And then what is the payroll? I thought we did payroll last week. I swear we did payroll last week on a Tuesday.
Maybe I brought the source to open up the second one.
Well, I know that, because this number looks familiar. I'm.
Let me pull that up.
Okay. If you'll look at that, I'm positive we did a payroll last week. Michelle is gonna show you this real quick. Let me get a chance. So you, you print the APLT ten. If you do the APLT eleven, it says include fund department breakdown. Can you also try running that and clicking that and see if it runs it by department? I'm still working towards getting it.
Eleven?
It's APLT eleven.
Will APLT twenty-two be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Because I've got this one down too far. I can't.
Yes. Yeah, I think you can do a twenty-four or a twenty-four. Open in voice report. See what, see what twenty-four A looks like. Or even that, do you have the screen that has all of like twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? Try twenty-four A. And then will it run for, there's two of them here. You said put in the batch number or something to print them on? Do you have any questions?
No ma'am, no, no.
What is all this?
The one that you're pointing to is the K and R eight, is the sheriff's department.
So we have three?
Um, we have the regular steps, we have the sheriff's step, and then two of the payrolls. And I can see where the payroll is going. I need to drag it very versatile there. Small one.
Okay. What's up ma'am? What's in this?
This is maybe the regular batch, and this is the sheriff's batch.
Oh. That didn't work. It doesn't, oh. What's this, the twenty-two?
If this one was down further, I could use.
Yes, okay, so the eleven isn't gonna work in that I need it to do that. That makes it a million times easier. I wasn't sure what this looked like, so it probably still does it by department, but it does it by number, and number doesn't mean anything to me. So.
Well, it's the only thing bad with this one is it has to go through all the approval steps, so if anything has to be corrected, it's several steps to get back to where you can correct it.
Just see, puts it in, yeah. It still just doesn't, it does it by vendor, but I don't know why they're saying it's by department. I'll look at it, yeah. This is what works where it tells me the department. So this is just the sheriff's?
Yes.
And you, but you can't do one for the?
Not unless I go through and start approving all of them, which if they're taken corrections, it makes it a little hard to make them because they're past that step.
Okay. Alright. On the bills, I got this one and this one. I'll just have to look at them afterwards. Yes. Okay. Are you ready on the bills?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. So we've got two. So again, I am going to approve these hesitantly. I'm still working for I can get a report where it's by department. Because I can, we see the vendor, we see their pay, but I can't tell if it's correlated with the department that the description goes with. So I'm going to keep working on finding a way we can do that. So the first batch. So I've moved to approve the bills for the eleven, twelve, twenty-five report in the amount of four hundred ninety-three dollars, seven hundred and forty-three cents. Nope. Four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, seven, four hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
I'm gonna let you start. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Okay, the second one. It's got a different date on it. Okay, so I've moved to approve the bills dated eleven. Oh, that's when it was.
They're both for the twelfth.
They're both for the twelfth. They printed that on the eleventh, okay. Yeah, I should probably clarify, because we have two different. So I've moved to approve the bills for eleven, twelve, twenty, twenty-five with the batch number eleven eighteen twenty-five. I think it's sheriff's office. Is that what S O K S is? In the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. So we'll sign these.
Oops. Oh yeah, that's nice.
I guess there's those two. Okay. So we have two payrolls. The second one, I do think we did this, but it doesn't hurt to do it a second time, so in case we didn't. And the second one is, is it a different group or these corrections? We have one that's for nineteen something.
Yeah, that one is the holiday adjustment here.
Very good.
The other ones, we don't have it right.
Yep.
Okay.
Catch it.
Excuse me. And again, I'm approving payroll hesitantly because I need different reports, but that's coming in the future. Okay, I would move to approve the payroll for the pay date of eleven five twenty twenty-five in the amount of seven hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. And then we have a second report. I would approve, I mean, I would move to approve payroll for the eleven five twenty twenty-five date in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents.
Do we need to add any, anything else to that to make it clear in the motion, like adjustments or correcting or?
Yeah, I can, so I'll, I'll just start over. So I would move to approve payroll in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents for the eleven five twenty twenty-five pay date for corrections in holiday pay for the sheriff's department.
Does that sound accurate, Michelle?
Or is it not just sheriff? Is it just?
I would say leave time. Because it, for holiday time, it was more like sick time, PTO time.
Okay. So.
Just leave time?
Or discretionary time.
Good enough. Yeah.
Is it just for the sheriff's office?
Yes.
So I would just.
Adjustments to sheriff's office.
I would say payroll adjustments for the sheriff's office.
Sounds good. Second, sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Okay. Way too many things on my desk. Okay. Oh, we gotta sign those. I need to sign those. No, I, no, it was good to put that extra in there. I. Okay, so the only last thing is what to do with the canvas, because if no one can be here, you can't do it anyway.
I will reach out to Josh, please.
Yeah, I sent him a message. I said, can we move the canvas to next week on Tuesday? And I said, what if it doesn't meet the publication requirements, so.
And I will do my best to make it whatever day it's set for, just because I've never done it before and I think it'd be interesting. You know?
Yeah.
But I.
Well, it is, I mean, it is our responsibility, so I, for us to do it together and, I mean, in a meeting is, makes more sense.
We just made point one C there, point one N, but it's a little different if you need a point three N.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. We'll just, whatever.
I will reach out to Josh.
Yeah, let me know. I mean, I close by usually. I can cut out half a day if I need to. Or more. Especially if I have more warning. I can let, I can move time around.
Alright, I'm double checking. I had a whole mess of things.
Oh yeah, so, yeah, double checking.
I think we've done it. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, well, yeah, what I was asking about, I guess, is that last year we had that deal here, we hosted or whatever, that Northeast Kansas deal. Is that what I'm talking about for?
It's Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, and it rotates.
Yeah. And you're going? Is there a bunch of folks going or?
Um, five, six, seven, something.
Yeah, I can't go. I, I, I went two or three years in a row. Yeah, I can't go. I went two or three years in a row. I just, my schedule's changed this year and I don't have the same flexibility.
Just kinda go and meet some other folks in similar positions and rub the elbows and talk.
I mean, yeah, it's just...
Commiserate a little bit and celebrate.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice...
Yeah, okay, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
We're not clear shutting down, I think we're just, is it like department heads and stuff going mainly?
Yeah.
Clerks, or the deputy clerks and things like that? Okay, very good, just asking. I don't think I move, but...
Alright, I do not have anything else, do you have anything else?
No ma'am.
Okay, and I've made a bunch of notes, so I'll try to hopefully figure out what all this means.
We have a big, borrow the Sheriff's Office swap van and take everybody up there in one truck? Carpool up there, that'd be hilarious.
That would be...
Like the command van or something? Yeah, no, I'm out.
Maybe you can get Franny to drive you up there with the...
Yeah, she could, you guys could take the bus.
Yeah.
Take the, whatever it's called.
Public transportation, it's for the public.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Michelle, do you have anything else? Okay, then I would need a motion.
To adjourn?
To adjourn, I couldn't think of the word.
Now, next week is the same time, or Tuesday, nine o'clock, back to normal, is that correct?
Yes, next week will be Tuesday, November 18th, back to the normal times.
Okay, did you make the motion? What?
However, next, you need one?
I think it's in December.
It is December 30th, I believe.
Okay.
I think it's last Tuesday of the month.
In December, alright. Alright, did you make a motion, Heather?
Yes, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Alright, so moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay.
You made it through, Heather.
Oh my gosh. I'm gonna sit here, I'm gonna go through my notes, do whatever I need to follow up with.
Figure out what you forgot?
Yeah, figure out what I forgot.
I took the work truck home last night.
You what?
I took the work truck home last night and I left my little s- satchel of all the county stuff in it and everything, and I, you know, it was in her...